Okay, we are recording.
Okay, I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty to order. Clark, please call a roll.
Mr. Lombardi?
Present.
Mrs. Mayo? Here. Mrs. Vada? Here. Mr. Connell?
Here.
And Mr. Jones?
I didn't hear you, Paul.
Muted. I see it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome.
Hey, we have a quorum. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which. One nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll move on to a public comment. Does anybody have any comments? You can raise your hand through the. Either, wow, I can't see everybody at the same time, but I'll try to look through. Through the system, that would be great. I'll go through and see if anybody is physically raising their hand as well. I don't see anyone. Does anybody have any community comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to take anything off, but I had a question about one item, if that's okay?
Of course.
At the appropriate time?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it just simply, I just noticed on the. Well, actually, it might land, you know something? I take that back. It's not, it's not the consent agenda. I apologize. It's actually item number four, so I'll. I'll bring it up then.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, so hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion made and seconded. You get that, Patama? Anybody have any further questions? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Ball opposed? The ayes have it. Wow, moving right along, Superintendent.
All right, so I have a couple of informational pieces and then I have a recommendation to make that I'm going to request a, a discussion and vote from the school committee. But first, I'll start with the informational pieces. We are at the tail end of a very difficult week with staffing and, and, and various quarantines out there. Where, again, I, I just. We keep saying to our, our teachers or our staff how amazing they've been and how much they've persevered and how flexible they've been. In order to keep our schools open throughout the week. Given that, though, we have a snowstorm coming. So we. So we will make the call tomorrow, but right now it looks like Thursday will become a distance learning day. And one of the things that, so we're, we're not going to take it as a snow day. We will do what we tend to check the necessary boxes for the Department of Ed. So that this doesn't become a makeup day at the end of the year. However, what, what we're going, the way we're going to approach this is that Thursday will become an asynchronous day, which means we're not expecting students to be on Google Meet all day long or behind the computer. The teachers will, again, assuming the snow comes, the teachers will be giving some assignments. Again, just to check the box to count it as a school day. But the real emphasis is for our students, especially our young students, to go outside and play in the snow, be a kid. Get away from the computer. And for our older kids, don't sit there like a lump on a couch playing video games. Go out and shovel your walk, shovel the neighbors' walks. Just get outside and do something. We're not going to be strapping you to the computer all day long. So that is pretty much the, the assignment if we do end up having a snow day. Teachers have already started putting information together in packets and. Again, the emphasis is to just be a kid, go out and play. So with that, we also have some good news from the, the Department of Health. That come January, there is going to be a new test which is available to be administered within schools, to all staff and all students. So I will be sending out additional information on this. We're looking to sign North Smithfield up and what this is, is a rapid screening for. Any staff or students who have COVID and are asymptomatic. So this has been tested in, there's a several districts have done the pilots for this, Central Falls, Providence, and Lincoln. The feedback has been fantastic. It's quick, it's easy. And rapidly, within the day, you can identify who is in your building and who is asymptomatic so that they can go into immediate isolation. So from a public health safety standpoint within our schools, this is going to be very welcome, especially over the next several months. As all indications will be that the. The virus is going to spread and this is going to be a very difficult time until a vaccine is readily available. So again, further information will be coming out and it will be something that will be. It's not mandatory, we, you know, we, we will have a provision slip of support. But what we're hoping is to be able to just rapidly screen and test all of our staff, all of our students, and draw a baseline. And begin isolating some folks, you know, put them on distance learning or teaching at home if they're asymptomatic at that time. More information is coming out for that. Athletics, I don't have any hard information on when winter sports begins. There is some discussion about having it begin on the fourth. The week that we return from the winter recess. However, there's a caveat with this and that's going to lead into my next section and my. Recommendation and a vote for the school committee. So. We, winter sports, it may be on hold and not start the week we get back from recess because the commissioner yesterday put out a memo. With an adjustment to the school calendar. And. The first adjustment is that next week. The twenty first, twenty second, and twenty third. Twenty fourth of the, of the winter recess begins with Christmas Eve, but those three days, the commissioner has put out a recommendation and permission. For districts that if they need to switch to distance learning for those three days. They have permission from the, the Department of Ed and the Governance Office to do so. Now, we've already made that determination to have those three, well, Monday's a distance learning day anyway, so we would have Tuesday and Thursday as, as distance learning. So our district as, as well as many others have made that determination. But what the Department of Ed and the Commissioner had said is that any district that needs to take those three days, whether it's to isolate folks prior to the, the holiday. Or due to staffing issues, they, they can do so. The other piece in the Commissioner's memo was the, an extension. Of such, of the winter recess. So our just, the, the state was due to, is due to return back to in-person learning on January fourth. Many districts have already switched that week to distance learning. Commissioner has changed the calendar in the sense that, such that no student is allowed to return to school in-person learning prior to January seventh. But no later than January fifteenth. So that is the Thursday, the week we come back. To the Thursday afterwards. So what I like to do, my recommendation is. The Commissioner has already closed, or switched the schools to distance learning from Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the week after the. Winter recess. I would like to continue distance learning for Thursday and Friday of that week as well. All right, so the week of the fourth through the, the eighth. Of which the earliest week of return would be the seventh anyway. I'm recommending that North Smithfield. Takes that week as distance learning. Now. The mayor said we can't, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the Commissioner said we can remain on distance learning to the fifteenth. I'm not prepared to recommend. That amount of time to be on distance learning. We know the kids need to be back in school. We know. It is very difficult for families arranging childcare, you know, but. Here's, here's the reason why I'm making this recommendation. It really is. There's a, there's a number of issues that have come up, not just within our district, but in throughout the state. Is number one, after Thanksgiving. There were so many folks that still met in groups and there was a surge in COVID cases the weeks after Thanksgiving. We're all anticipating that the same thing is going to happen. On Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, and New Years. There's an expectation that there will be a contingent of, of people who may not isolate, who may go into social gatherings. And the concern is, is that without this buffer between the holidays and the return to school, we're going to have a lot of people coming back. Asymptomatic. And eventually they will spread the coronavirus to others. So just like after Thanksgiving. All data, all statistics indicate that there will be a surge of cases. The other thing, and this, this, this is something that we've, we've asked family and staff as well. We are on travel restrictions. There, there's mandatory quarantine if, if somebody travels to a, a hotspot. Which is pretty much the entire country right now. And I hate to say this, but, and, and again, this isn't just us, this, 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 this is other districts. We have a lot of families, and I would say even staff, that do travel. They do go to these places and they're not necessarily upfront when it comes to quarantining upon the return. And so between all the gatherings over the holiday, with all the travel that may or may not happen, with all the quarantining that needs to happen as a result, but may not happen. The Commissioner, the Governor gave a buffer. Distance learning after the holiday. So again, I don't want to go the full fifteen days, up until the fifteenth, as is permitted. But I don't want to return just after the three days. I, I'm making the recommendation that from the fourth to the eighth. Our schools are on distance learning that will give a week for everybody to isolate, a week for, you know, symptoms to start manifesting themselves. So that when, well, and the following Monday is a distance learning day, so when we return to in-person instruction. It should be a lot safer for everybody. Not more convenient for our families, but safer for our families and our teachers. So that's the recommendation and I know the school committee has been very supportive in these odd days and these adjustments to the calendars, but this, this, this is. And the timing. Of a lot of these decisions never really coincided with the school committee meeting. That's why I want to hold this and bring it to the school committee for a discussion or vote.
Are you going to make any other recommendations, Superintendent?
That, that would be it at this stage.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
I actually have a question that I'm just not clear on. You're talking about the fourth through the eighth. That's what you're asking us to vote on at this point. But you had said previously, December twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three, we could go to distance learning. Because the Commissioner said that. Are we going to go to distance learning?
We are, we are, yes.
Okay, that's a definite.
And unfortunately, that, that was one I had to call a week ago and we weren't coinciding with the school committee meetings. So, and again, it, it's, most of the state is closed. Most of the schools are closed that week anyway. And I just, just want to emphasize when we're open, but our neighbors around us or across the state, you know, are on business learning. We then run into staffing issues because our teachers, our support staff live in those communities and, and many have small children. And it, it, and I understand that that's. When we do this, when a teacher has to be home with a, a child because their school is on distance learning. That it's the same impact on our own families. So i- it's one of those catch twenty-two type of things, but again. With FFCRA, with the CARES Act, you know, every employee has the ability. To be home if child, if daycare or school closes. Fortunately, our teachers have been fantastic. They, they, like many families, try to make alternate arrangements. Or they flip it and they teach from home. Our in-person learners still have the benefit of, of their teaching. But it, it's. It's difficult, but, but they're getting it done.
Thank you.
Jones?
So, Mr. Superintendent, we're looking at three solid weeks of, of not being in the school buildings and. While for most students, you know, that, that, you know, I, I'm sure there's a solid plan in place, what are we doing? Or are we doing anything different or? Special for our life skills students, our five oh four students, and our IEP students?
So I, I did have a, a talk with Mrs. Raffigan about that and she is going to be providing consent. Ben? Would you pop, would you pop in? I am, you know, I'm about to embarrass myself by mispronouncing a word.
That's okay.
Compensatory service, thank you.
So, you're calling it compensatory, but that, that would infer that we're not providing service and I just want families to know that we are. It's just a different model. It's a distance learning model, but I feel as though the safety of all students is just as important, health and safety. And it wouldn't be fair to bring those children into the building as well. I think it's an opportunity to keep the buildings solidly clean, keep the infection out. But as Mr. St. Jean said, I will be really beefing up my summer program this year because I'm extremely optimistic and hopeful. That this will be past us by June and we'll be able to have a fantastic in-person program. I've come up with some very creative ideas for different types of programs for our students. I'm planning on extending the day, extending the length of weeks, so we are going to make up services for our kiddos. We know that they really do need that in person, Mr. Jones, but I'm very concerned for some of the health and safety issues.
No, and, and thank you. I appreciate that. So, but for these, for these, you know, I mean, obviously the, the winter break being what it is, right? It's, it's time off. On the other ends of those with the two solid weeks of, of the distance learning. I, I mean, are you worried at all that this is going to set our, our special education students back by having this, this long time? Away from the school building?
I worry about all the students, honestly. I think that we've seen some regression with all of our kiddos, not just the kiddos with IEPs. And we have seen that there are many students, believe it or not, in the life skills program who families have chosen to do full distance learning. Even when they've had the opportunity to be four days in person, because they are, you know, concerned about coming back. I'm always worried about the kids. I'm their biggest advocate. So that's why I'm hoping that come summer, we can definitely do things to. Provide additional services for them, but I agree with you. It is, it's a long period of time for them to be out. But I just weigh the health and safety with the struggle of, you know, them being on distance learning and I.
Suzanne, you, you just cut out for a moment there. But, and one of the things I'd just add, Mr. Jones, is that, yeah, it is a concern and this, this is certainly. You know, something, anytime we have to switch over to distance learning, it's not a decision we make lightly because right now, I mean, if. I wish you could certainly like, like walk through NSCS to see every, all that, the, the stops that are being taken out to keep the school running and open. This week, especially last week as well. I mean, it, it, it's, it's been a. Everyone is putting in every effort to keep the schools open. The, what we're looking at, because the Mondays are distance learning days, we're, we're looking at six days. You know, so we, we're already looking at the Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. And then it would be the week after the winter break. It would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. With the anticipation of a full return after we've had that buffer period. And that also gets us closer to the school-wide screenings that I'm, I'm getting the information and we're going to get some time table for. So what we're, what we're really hoping for is after a bad Thanksgiving, after tremendous spikes in the community and across the state and the country. Since Thanksgiving, the anticipated spikes over the, the holiday rate. That we have a buffer period and then we also have school-wide screenings coming up and we're hoping that we come out of January. Into February. In a safe, safe place for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any further questions?
I just have one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Two, one, just a comment on Paul's comment. Yeah, I, I think that it's, it isn't ideal. It is not ideal. But, and I was, I was just sitting here writing some notes down as we're talking. I'm saying, so the option basically would be to bring the kids in Thursday, Friday, and Monday. Or not. It's really, I mean, as simple as that and I, I think from a learning perspective, the in-person learning is important, but again, the, I think the spikes. I think the spikes weren't anticipated to go on for this long. And this is our last holiday, well, not the, not the last holiday, but it's like, okay, we get past, we get past Christmas. Oh, Hanukkah, New Years. Then we got a, you know, a good, a good breather and hopefully we'll have some vaccines and by, you know, well, hopefully we'll see some changes at that point. And I do have a question. I, I think it's related to this, if I may. Mr. Superintendent, has there been any discussion about? Vaccines being made available like through the schools? Has, have you heard anything about that at all or is that not even on the table yet?
Well, the.
If, if people want it. I mean, not ma- I know it's not mandatory. I meant just.
No, no, educators are in, oh, the, the next phase, you know, so, so, so we're coming up earlier. There is some discussion about including our nurses in the first round with the, the healthcare worker. So that, 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 that's, that's in the works. That, that's something that was brought up in a, a meeting today. I don't have details on that. So, but yes. A twelve teachers staff, they're considered essential staff, so when it hits that, and again, I, I've lost track of which one C or which, which, which wave it is. So I, I, I can't speculate right now, so I mean, it might be February or March that the vaccine starts making it out towards essential workers of which teachers are considered to be part of that group.
Thank you, Superintendent. Superintendent, I, I think that you know my position. I'd like to see students in, in class as much as possible. And fully understand and respect your position. I don't know if this, as Mr. Jones may have said earlier, if there's any other alternatives. I, I mean, and that's, I guess, maybe not even on your level, but we need to keep kids busy. I can see. Deterioration of my own children by just not seeing other kids, not. Sports, not doing different things. And again. It's, I, I don't, I, I mean, it's somewhat. Different or better when the kids are in school and maybe that's. Now that, and I respect and I, I agree that during the times that you mentioned, for the kids not to come in, I'm just trying to figure out. If there's an alternative. And obviously it's, it's, then you put a bunch of kids together and that, I mean. I don't know the answer. So I guess. You know, I guess the, the group in this room is the brain trust, not necessarily me to, to try to figure this out, so. If anybody has any ideas, it would be great and I know that you've probably thought of every possible idea, but, you know, just.
It's difficult when even outside of schools. I mean, one of the, the, the places of spread, it's not necessarily within interscholastic athletics because. We are under very, very tight protocols that we cannot operate. I can't say the same for the dance studios and the rec leagues. And that is actually where a lot of our students are coming out positive. So it's, it's, it, it, there is the need to socialize. There is the need to get together and play and compete and do all of those things, but that also comes with an inherent risk. So I, I wish I had a magic wand, you know, I would have, I would have waved that wand, you know, every week from, for, for the past year. All we can do is just, just, just try to include as many students as we can to make the, the distance learning piece as engaging as possible. Even when they're socializing over, you know, virtually, it's something. And, and so, but, but, and again, with, with, with the week after vacation. The, the earliest week of return would be that Thursday. All I'm asking is that we take that Thursday and Friday. To give ourselves two days plus a weekend buffer and then we return and force the week after.
And, and I do agree with that, Superintendent, one hundred percent. I, I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to rack my brain. On what else could we be doing?
Well, we can think about it, but, I mean, at the moment, I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you want it, but I'll wait until.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that, that we accept the Superintendent's recommendation that we extend the distance learning. And I guess it'll be for all classes, for all students on those, that Thursday, Friday. With the idea then Saturday, Sunday off, and Monday is going to be a distance learning day anyway. So it'll give us a full five-day, it'll be six days, I guess, total of, of distance learning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I, I would just like to say, I'm sorry, I, I honestly, as much as we don't like to do this, I think we have no choice, given what has happened since Thanksgiving. We have no choice.
Yeah, and, and I, and I don't want to come out here and ask, you know, to go all the way to the fifteenth. I want to just minimize this, you know, and maximize it at the same time and those two days I, I think are key.
Superintendent, is that the recommendation by Mr. Connell, is that what you need, that what you're requesting?
So everything else, I mean, the. The Commissioner said nobody can return. Before the seventh. So I'm looking at, instead of returning the sep, I, I'd like to do distance learning the seventh and the eighth. That day. Monday is, the following Monday is what it always was and then we'll just, you know, be in person on Tuesday. So I'm just basically looking for the seventh and the eighth. So I'm just basically looking for the seventh and the eighth, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I, I, and I assume that the principals have this taken care of, but, you know, I hope we just think about the kids around Christmas, I mean, it's, I know it's the academics too, but there's all these little kids, I, I'm specific, thinking about the elementary school, I mean, you know, whether there, you guys have some sort of little Christmas stuff to set up or songs or parties or something because it's still a joyous time and I, I feel, I understand you have to take the time off the week before, but that's when all those things would be happening.
Mrs. Dano, if you can say, she, she is piling on the queue this week.
I figured.
So absolutely, actually, it started, we kicked it off last Friday per the request of one of our grade four students. We had a surprise pajama day last Friday. And then this entire week is kind of filled with various things. Today was ugly holiday sweater day, tomorrow was crazy accessory day. We have crazy hat hair day and then a dress to impress day where all of the kiddos can dress up. Our teachers have been acutely aware of what's happening right now. We, we recognize that this is not a time that our kids can go to friends' houses to celebrate the holidays. So we're trying to make it as fun and interactive as we can in school for both our students and our staff, because we also realize that our staff is not able to go to friends' and families' houses right now. So we're trying, we are doing pancake breakfast. We just have a variety of things planned for everybody over the next week to try to make it as engaging as possible and learning too, Mr. St. Jean, I promise that, but.
I want you to have fun.
Yeah, we, we definitely are and, and one of the, one of the coolest things that, that has kind of come out of this is our teachers have really been using, as I've said before, our entire grounds. And when we had snow last time, which we're going to get more, but our kids were outside playing in the snow non-stop and it was fantastic. So it's kind of exciting as to what's coming up. And we do have things planned for after the holidays, hopefully the snow is still around to kind of expand that. So we're, we're definitely doing our best to make sure the kids still feel like kids right now.
And, and the middle school has a spirit week going on right now and there's all, just all kinds of things happening throughout the middle school as well. It's actually unfortunate that the snow is coming and yes, it'll be fun to go out and play in the snow and get baked in the side of the head with an ice ball. I mean, your kids just don't get that anymore, they need to get hit in the side of the head with an ice ball. You know, so, you know, but that kind of fun is, you know, wha- 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 what, what, what the schools are trying to put on this week. And I just went out of focus. So yes, that's doing everything we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I call a vote on this?
You haven't called it yet, we have a motion in the second, but it hasn't been called yet.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. And thank you Superintendent and everyone who's on the, on the Zoom call. You know, we, we appreciate, one, your time and all of your efforts with, you know, I, I truly believe that we're doing the best possible job we can be doing. I know that everybody on the Zoom call cares about the kids, so thank you.
Thank you, and I, I will encapsulate all of this and send it out to the community tomorrow.
Thank you. Moving on to section four. This is for informational purposes, but does anybody want to speak on this matter? Sir Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the fact that we have three teachers who are retiring. And as I've said in the past, it's always difficult to see our valued teachers leave us for retirement purposes. But the circumstances of this virus just make it so much more difficult. And these three teachers represent a lot of years of dedication to our students. So I hope they realize how much we appreciate their efforts and their commitment to our school system and how much they will be missed. And we certainly wish them a happy and a healthy retirement. And the three teachers I should have named, Sherri Senical.
Jane, you just went on mute.
You muted yourself.
Sorry, what did you hear last?
She started Sherri.
Okay, Sherri Senical and Claire McWilliams and Roberta Palumbo, and we thank them very, very much.
I, I, I want to add, th- th- this, this is, Jen Dano and Rachel Salvatore had this idea. It is that we, we've had a number of teachers and, and I see, you know, Claire's with us on the Zoom meeting. This, this is all very impersonal. And what we'd like to do and their idea was that once we get through the whole vaccine thing and we get towards the end of the year, we bring back the teachers that have retired over this year and, and we celebrate, we, we had something. So, you know, so, you know, a lot of our words will be saved till then, this, but this, this is what we would like to do. And I, and I want to thank Jen and Rachel for this idea, I think it was just absolutely fantastic.
That's great, teachers deserve it, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I just want to say Sherri was with us for twenty-three years, Dr. McWilliams seventeen years and Roberta Palumbo twenty-four years. So that's a lot of experience.
It is.
Mr. Jones?
Williams is on, so, you know, my daughter had in high school, so congratulations, good retirement.
Mr. Jones, no question, your hands up on the.
Sorry, I was just scratching, oh.
All right, well, thank you, and again, this is for informational purposes. Let's move on to old business. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the fiscal year twenty-one operating or capital? Superintendent, do you want to, I, I don't know how much is at this point hearsay or how much was actually voted on. But we feel that we will be one hundred percent funded and maybe a couple of bucks more from the state. Is that now factual or is that?
Yeah, Lisa, if you want, would you like to?
That is correct, about a week or so ago, the bu- the governor's budget was enacted and I'm happy to say that we're going to be fully funded for FY twenty-one.
Okay, going back, going to new business, the fiscal year twenty-two operating and capital budget. I'd ask that this be referred to the budget subcommittee. Does anybody have any questions before we make a referral? I want to entertain a motion to refer the operating and capital budgets to the budget subcommittee.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, anybody have any questions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it. So.
Mr. Chair, can I, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Connell.
The coaching appointments, that's just informational.
It is. Did you have any questions on that? I think he froze, so if he did. See if he just gets back on, so. Mr. Connell?
Here it comes, here it comes. I have great faith, you will appear.
There he is.
There he is.
Well, I see you got, I was just asking, the coaching appointments, that's just informational purposes, right?
Yes. You have any questions?
No, I, I actually just want to know, I think the superintendent mentioned it, I was wondering when those sports, if we think we're going to get them going, and I believe he, he already gave us the date when he thinks they might start and.
Well, a- a- and that's where it gets difficult because the, they're looking to maybe start the week of the fourth, which becomes problematic if most of the schools in the state are on distance learning.
Yeah.
So that's still being discussed.
Yep, get it, it's an ongoing thing.
Okay, and for everyone who's on the Zoom call, we are going to go to executive session. We will come out at some point and we, we will not take up any other matters other than the actions related to the job performance of the superintendent's evaluation. So just if anyone's wondering if we're going to come out and vote on something else, we will, it's not on the agenda. That's the sole thing we would be voting on. So Superintendent, well, so on an annual basis, we do an evaluation for the superintendent. He has a right, i- it's generally done in executive session, that's our preference. But he does have a right to do it in open session, he has chose to do it in executive session. And a letter was sent to him in respect to that matter. So I will move, I will entertain a motion to go to executive sessions under Brett Allen General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, one in regards to the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second.
All right, so what, what I'll do is I'm pausing.
Let me roll, let me just.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Fatima, if you'd be call a roll.
Carol Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. We're in executive session, Superintendent?
Right, so I am going to pause the, this recording for YouTube. And I'm going to, I've already pre-selected Fatima and the school committee to go into a breakout room. So you will see a, a, a notice pop up on your screen, asking you to go, go into this breakout room. When you click yes, I will see you on the other side. And then we'll have executive session and then I will throw you out of the breakout room and you'll go back into this meeting, I will resume the recording and then you can take your vote and adjourn. Okay, so. You're recording.
Welcome back everyone and I want to entertain a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Fatima can't hear us, so. Don't think.
I can't hear on mic.
I put my headphones back in. She can hear now, so if you want to continue.
Can you roll call?
Okay, Carol Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. We're out of executive session, I'll entertain a motion to seal the record. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? I think all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? And for the record, I just wanted to make a statement for the record that no votes were taken in an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion been made, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Everyone, thank you for attending and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Good night.